...liberties and fashion into one united people from multitudes brought to our county out of many races and languages. Provide with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in your name we entrust the authority of government that there may be justice and peace at home and that through obedience to your law we may show forth your glory among the nations of the earth. In time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, do not let our trust in you decline or fail, all of which we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment before we really get underway to recognize some special guests that we have here today. I'd like to introduce and have them stand and then they can introduce others that are with them. This is Mr. Bill Stone, who is a cooperative extension agent for Lee County, and Mr. Mark West, who is the principal for Lee Early College. And let me just say this, that we four of the commissioners have had a most challenging and delightful half-hour conversation with the young people that they're going to introduce to you in just a moment. And they had some very appropriate questions for commissioners as they look to their future and service to their community, and we were just very impressed and very pleased to have them here and felt that they should be recognized. So if you would recognize your students, we would be most pleased to hear from them.
Sure. Right, stand up, Chris. This is Chris Petty, Chastity Tumer, Jezerel Winley, Ariel Hickerson, Denise Garcia, and Danielle Moore. And they did a wonderful job developing questions and interviewing this morning, just earlier. Did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much for being with us. And please feel free to stay as long as you can, but we do appreciate you have schedules to keep, especially the students, so you may leave at any time that you so desire. I'd like to now call on Lavelle McLean to present our employee of the month. Mrs. McLean.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Rhonda Crumpton with the Lee County Library has been selected as April's Employee of the Month. Rhonda has been employed with Lee County since 1998 and currently serves as a library technician. Rhonda's dedication to her position and to her department is apparent by her willingness to go above and beyond to assist coworkers and patrons of the library. As stated in her nomination, she is the most unselfish person I know, and the words constantly heard from Rhonda are, "Do you need any help?" You can always count on Rhonda to lighten the mood with laughter, as she is also a gifted storyteller. Rhonda always maintains a positive attitude. She never complains or lets anything affect her job performance. She is a very knowledgeable, behind-the-scenes person that truly deserves to be recognized. Rhonda is originally from Sanford, where her mother, sister, and brother all still reside. She has three children and three grandchildren. She enjoys singing with her church choir, reading, and ACC basketball. She also writes plays for her church and has published a book entitled, "The Choices We Make." Based on her dedication, service, and commitment to Lee County, the selection committee felt that Rhonda should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Rhonda Employee of the Month for April 2009.
Congratulations, Ann. I'd like to have you shake the hand of all the commissioners before you leave, but I've got some good things, good news for you, some nice rewards for your outstanding service to the county, and we do appreciate it. First, one free movie rental, and that certificate will get it for you, and one day off with pay, and show them, and that will help along the way. One large two-topping pizza, if you would accept that. All right? And two free two-litter drinks from Papa John's Pizza. And then we have this lovely star award, which we hope you'll keep and treasure for the rest of your life, and this plaque that simply says that you're an outstanding employee and that we're very proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your day early.
Take your day early.
Is your name listed?
It's Rhonda.
Okay. I'm gonna order that when I get home.
I just want to thank everyone for what you do, not only this, but everything you do to make us feel appreciated as employees of Lee County.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move to the, are there any additions to the agenda? And if not, do I hear a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted?
So moved.
It's moved. All in favor of the agenda as we have it before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The agenda is approved unanimously. Moving along to approval of the consent agenda, are there any, do I hear a motion that the consent agenda be approved as submitted?
So moved.
It's been moved. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There is no opposition, so the consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. There are no public comments today, and so we'll move, I'm sorry? Slow down?
That was hard to believe.
Right. We'll move to old business, and I would draw your attention to pages forty-five to forty-seven of our agenda packet, and I will make some comments. This is for the appointment to the Sand Hills Mental Health Board, which Mrs. Shook is involved with, and as well as myself, and of course, all of us. And the question at hand is the need to fill a space on that board, which has been vacated by Mrs. Doris Holland, who has tendered her resignation. And we have an applicant, as you may recall, who made her interest known to us at the last meeting, and we wanted to open this up and make sure that if there were any other people that wished to be considered, that they be considered for this position. And I believe that there were no other applicants, and so I believe that it would probably be in order to, well, first, Mrs. Shook, would you have any comments whatsoever to make?
No. This applicant has a medical background, and she really has a desire to serve and get involved, and I'd like to make a move that we appoint her to that, I would move that we appoint her to that board.
The motion's been made to appoint her, and I was gonna say, if there was no objection by acclamation, but all in favor of this appointment of Mrs. Toni Ramsberger, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? There is no opposition, so that is approved unanimously. Thank you. Under new business, we have a request to appear before us today, Mr. Mike Watson, who is the executive director of the Sand Hills Mental Health Board, and I'd like to call on him to come forward at this time and speak to us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir, and thank you for that appointment. I look forward to working with you.
Actually, neither one of us will be able to be there next week, though. Will that affect a quorum, Eddie?
We'll see.
But we'll be, you know, it's the only meeting I've missed, and they're gonna be out of town as well as me, so.
Well, we'll look forward to welcoming you and welcoming her in May then. Good afternoon. Let me thank you for the time, the way your agenda's moving along. I'll try not to slow it down too much, but what I wanted to do is two things. One is to talk about our budget requests for next year, FY '09, '10, that's kinda hard to say, but, and then to just update you a little bit on what's going on with Sand Hills and a little bit about kinda community mental health in North Carolina. So I'll try to do that without eating up a great deal of your time. Our budget request for next year is very simple. It is the same as last year's. I think our board is very cognizant of kinda the financial situation with both the state and our counties. When you have a board with nine different county commissioners on it, as mine does, that reality comes through very clearly. So we are, again, requesting the same amount of money as last year. We have not requested an increase in the last several years. When you look at our rank among other mental health programs, we're fifteen out of twenty-four programs in the state, so we are kinda in the middle in terms of funding. One point I wanted to make is that all of our county general funding goes into the county walk-in crisis access units that we have in every county. So when you see us delivering or buying psychiatric services, walk-in kinda crisis services, that's where your money's going, every bit of it. So any reduction in that funding, I think, hits really close to home in terms of just access and capacity in each of our counties. There are a couple of significant changes going on with our system that I want to mention, and they are driven by a couple of things. One is just the continuing state requirements around what programs like Sand Hills are supposed to do. Continuing concern about trying to be a manager of services at the same time you're a provider. And then the requirement that comes from the state that we all become nationally accredited, and Sand Hills is in that process. So we're looking at sort of what are the national standards around authorizing services, managing contracts, monitoring providers, keeping consumers safe. And out of that, we're, you're gonna see two changes coming from us, and I think they will both, in the long run, be extremely positive. One is that we are going to be contracting out those county access functions that we now deliver. We have selected a provider who will, I hope, be ratified at our April board meeting. It's a group called Daymark. They have extensive experience in doing exactly what we do, and they do it very successfully in the Piedmont area and in the Winston-Salem area. So I think we're very fortunate to have them close to us. They are gonna be assuming that function in all eight counties for nine different locations. That means they will be delivering psychiatric services, outpatient services, the walk-in crisis services, handling commitments for the sheriff's department. They're gonna be hiring our staff. They'll be using the same facilities. They spent last week going around and meeting with our staff, which I think went pretty well. They will not be encumbered by the competitive issues that we have been. I think we really have had to try to limit what we do, because every time we did anything more, you kinda get into the issue that you're competing with your own provider network. So they will be unencumbered by that. They'll have the opportunity to expand services and to do, I think, an exceptional job. I'm not saying there will not be some transition issues, but they're, they have committed to performing all the functions that we do, and I think really have a chance to do a better job, because they're gonna, they're gonna get to deliver a broader array of services in the same locations than we've been able to do. Kinda fitting in with that, we are, we started last week and will roll out over the next three or four weeks, a centralized call center. And what that means is that every one of our eight counties, all the agencies in our counties, all the consumers and family members will have access to an 800 number. They can still walk into the county locations, but they're gonna have a number they can call and get immediate access to a licensed clinical person, who can talk to them about their needs and help them decide what kinda services they need and how to go about accessing them. One of the really interesting things about this capacity is that we can schedule appointments for people. We have the technical ability to go into the calendars of different providers and make that first appointment, and then see if they showed up. And we have about a hundred providers right now kinda signed up to participate in that. So that gives us the opportunity to make sure people get to talk to a licensed clinician, get clear and consistent information, and get access to services.
When you mentioned the 800 number, is that the time they'll talk to the licensed clinician?
Yes.
Or, okay, so they, they're not gonna go through this voicemail and all that?
No. No. Those are very clear the kinda standards we're dealing with. The phone is picked up by somebody who's either a nurse, or a social worker, or another licensed clinical person. We have just completed our needs assessment for 2009. That was a community-wide assessment, involved a lot of agencies, a lot of consumers and families, a lot of our providers around kinda what are the issues with community mental health. We had a meeting in each of our counties that was hosted by our Consumer and Family Advisory Committee. Those, all of those, I think, went very well. We're putting together the results. Many of them are not surprises, as you would expect. Just a couple of things. One is concerns about provider quality. One of the interesting things that is finally starting to happen is that providers are being required to be nationally accredited. And if you go back to 2006, when all the Medicaid changes got made, there are a whole group of people who came in, and this month, they had to be nationally accredited. So along the way, we're starting to see some of the less quality providers start to fall out, and more and more, our provider networks made up of people who have met these national standards and who are bigger, more comprehensive providers. Just a couple updates on some of the service issues. Something I'm very proud of is one of the real focus, one of the real issues for the, couldn't figure out the plural of focus, let it go. For the department, across the last couple of years, has been community inpatient care. We have made a real commitment to that. We spend about two and a half million dollars on individual inpatient psychiatric care. We have cut state hospital admissions last year by forty-five percent. We're on track to cut them this year by another thirty percent. But the thing that ties to that is we're finally starting to get outcome information on that, and that is very positive. What we're seeing is we have the second lowest readmission rates of any program in the state. So when you look at thirty-day readmissions or one-hundred-and-eighty-day readmissions, we're very low. We have the second highest rate for people being brought back into services within seven days. So what that means to me is that once we make that investment, if somebody goes into a hospital, which is a great cost to consumers, risk to law enforcement, transportation costs, emergency room costs, all that goes with that, we're making that a worthwhile investment. Fewer people are being readmitted, and more people are getting brought into service quickly. We've got a couple of good providers doing hospital transition teams, picking up people right out of the hospital and getting them services. And we've been doing that about a year, and what you're starting to see is that data start to reflect the outcomes that we were looking for. There's a lot of information. We're doing a provider training, again, aimed at the quality issue. We just finished a year-long training session done by people at UNC and Duke around child trauma. So in the next few weeks, there will be forty licensed, certified clinicians who will be experts in best practice dealing with trauma. So that's a year's work becoming a reality where our school systems, our departments of social services, will have access to people who really do know what to do with kids who have been traumatized either by domestic violence or one of a number of other reasons. Our priorities for this coming year are real simple. Trying to have as seamless as possible a transition for county programs, getting nationally accredited, continuing to refine our crisis services, and supporting community inpatient psychiatric care. Here in Lee County, about twenty-eight percent of the people go to, go to state hospitals. The converse of that is that seventy-two percent are treated in the community. We just worked out a new state-funded contract that's kind of outside my budget, which is good, that puts a good bit of money into First Health for inpatient psychiatric care. They're being rewarded because they expanded their beds, and I think that's a real resource open to consumers here in Lee County. I guess finally, you know, we have a new governor, a new secretary. I think they are absolutely committed to making community mental health in this state better and to dealing with the problems in the institutions. The fact that the governor showed up at a couple of state hospitals, kind of an announced, I think, sends a message about her concern about quality and about what goes on. There's a lot of support for community inpatient care. My hope is that we can continue to focus on a limited number of outcomes that really do matter for consumers, and try to hold everybody, including us, accountable for that. So that's kinda what I wanted to say. I apologize if that went too long. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, please, please stick around. Are there any questions?
Mr. Watson, do you, I see this county contributions form we have in our book per population, do you have that same, the same numbers based on the service provided by county?
You're talking about the dollar value or something like that?
No, I'm talking about the number of hits per county instead of population.
I like the number.
Number of patients.
Yeah, number of patients, I can.
Clients, right.
Yeah, I can certainly.
Number of hits per county.
Yeah, I can certainly get that for you.
You want the best of the benefits of the research.
Right, compared to the other counties.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't get its sort of cost or intensity, but let me see what I can put together for you.
Yeah, I mean, just in the, it'd help in the same format that we have right here.
Okay.
I've got a couple of quick ones that, this may not be the arena, but one in particular is with your toll-free number. For those folks who may be calling at desperate hours, at desperate times, and all kinds of hours for their Medicaid, is there anything in place for those kinds of situations where they haven't been able to see anyone and they're in dire need of the medication, is something in place for that?
Well, the call center is 24/7.
I understand.
And we also have contracts with Holly Hill, Moses Cone, and First Health right now, where they have clinical staff who will go to emergency rooms and meet people there and see them. And that, that kinda lets, gives people a, kind of an outlet to be seen on nights and weekends when they have an emergency.
Right, so, and while I'm thinking about, would you call out that 800 number?
I hate to say I don't know it. I don't have it memorized, but I will, I will get that to you. It is not operational in Lee County yet. We're kinda phasing it in, but it should be a couple of weeks before it'll, it'll be available.
All right, and the second one I have is, I'm certainly in our hearts, I pray to go out to the citizens, the families that suffered through this Moore County incident. But it makes me wonder if high-risk folks are tracked to the extent that when they miss appointments or miss their, their medicating, is there anything in place at this point in time that someone is alerted, and specifically law enforcement? And I know about ACLU and all those things, and we'll deal with that if we have to, but that's, really, that's the question right now. Because it would seem to me, if you've got people on high-risk assessments, there ought to be some bell that goes off fairly enough for, and you can't plan to cover everything, it certainly seems like one would be in place.
Well, I mean, you're absolutely correct. I mean, all of these kinds of tracking, monitoring sort of issues come up against confidentiality and patient rights. I think, you know, what, what our hospital transition teams.
And innocent victims have rights, too.
I couldn't agree more. What our hospital transition teams and our call center do is just make sure that, you know, we know if people made appointments, you know, we're trying to track them and get them to follow up. And, you know, we've had people run us out of their yards and off their front porches because they have a right, until you have some information that they may be a danger to themselves or others, they have a right to refuse services. There is an outpatient commitment statute that, you know, allows people to be placed on outpatient commitment where they actually can be picked up if they make an appointment. That's used fairly, fairly rarely, and if you're not careful, it becomes a real burden on law enforcement. They become essentially a, a transportation system for the mental health system, but, you know, I think cutting readmission rates, you know, making sure that people get follow-up care does a lot for community safety. You know, one brief comment I wanted to make, I was very proud of our, one of the things we've started is a mobile crisis team. And within an hour of that shooting and car thefts, the mobile crisis team and our staff were there at a church where the family members were having to wait to kinda see what happened. And they were there to help out, they had followed up with, you know, working with patients and staff at the facility and kind of ongoing community education around trauma and kinda how people deal with sort of, you know, horror of what's happened.
I guess my point is, it would seem to me that through mental health and the General Assembly, that someone would wanna take a more serious look at, you know, if you think about Virginia Tech, where a person had already been identified as a high-risk, and then there's no communication, that we ought to be looking at those kinds of things, maybe the board can take that, U of M, or the board can take up that kind of issue with the rest of it.
Well, I think, you know, you're correct. I mean, the major issue we're trying to deal with in what has become a very pluralistic set of providers is to make sure that people don't fall through the cracks as much as you can. Somebody doesn't come out of the hospital, not go see their doctor, and nobody noticed. You know, you can't make them, but you sure can encourage people, and you can follow up with them.
Well, I would think all pages are not the same, and there's gotta be some high-risk that are not following the rules or not following their instructions, and certainly are more serious patients than others.
And they're not just high-risk, they're also high-cost. So when you're spending, you know, when you're looking at people who have, you know, several hospitalizations over a period hospitalizations over a period of time, you know, not only are they at risk to themselves and the community, they're also just costing everybody a whole lot of money. And, and that really ought to focus special attention. You're exactly right.
Any other?
I was just going to say, I, I was really impressed with the pamphlets and the other handouts that you gave us prior to this meeting. Where, where are you placing those? Because I know you had indicated we individually would like to have some, you know, we, we could get them.
Well, what we're doing right now is just trying to make sure that people who are referral sources, you know, who, who, you know, have that information, that's what we'll do particularly with the call center, is press releases, you know, changing the telephone books, you know, getting out little cards that have got the number and sort of the information on it. You know, initially, there's a lot of focus on DSS and health departments and school systems and magistrates. One of these magistrates end up is, you know, they, they make a decision not to commit somebody, you know, they ought to have some other alternative, and one of them might be to say, okay, well, here's a number you can call and, you know.
And when did you say the eight-hundred number would go into effect for Lee County, tentatively?
By the end of May at the latest.
Is it this one?
No.
It's not that one?
I'll get you all the information on the eight-hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to add that Mrs. Shook and I had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Watson and his director of the local center here about three weeks ago or four, and we were, I think, both really impressed with the dedication and, and the sensitivity that you expressed to us, that you had for this transition period. And I'm just thinking about, we're in such a stressful period now, and it's not likely to get less so, with so much going on, never, to my mind, has what the work that you're in been more important and appreciated by those who know what you do on a day-to-day basis. This is not glamour work, but this is very, very necessary fabric of our community type net that can, has the potential for saving a lot of lives. And so, I just wanted to thank you for the work you folks do, and, and I think you hear a, a sense of appreciation from this board and, and good luck, good fortune.
Thank you, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I just want to say that this, this is a very impressive board, it's a big board. And like I shared with you, the first meeting I went to, it's the first meeting in my entire life I went where I didn't say a thing because all these acronyms and whatever, that were just totally over my head. So, I am very impressed with this board, and I have started to ask questions, huh?
Sure have. Thank you.
The next, the next item on our agenda is Mr. Howard Surphus, who is our director of our health department, and he's going to talk to us about the Lee County Dental Program and the elimination of that program. Mr. Surphus?
Thank you, good afternoon. Before I begin, I would like to introduce Dr. David Fisher. Dr. Fisher is chairman of the Board of Health and was part of the search committee last summer that landed me here, so he is here in the event that there are questions I cannot answer. And remember, I've only been here since August, so anything prior to that, he may be the person to go to. I do want this board to be aware that as early as last July, when I was interviewing for this position, the Board of Health told me that whoever was to be the next director needed to, among other things, evaluate the dental clinic, take a look at the strengths and weaknesses, take a look at the financials, and then recommend to the Board of Health a revised business plan, one part of which could include whether or not to keep it a float. Took me about four months to evaluate this and all the other programs that we have in public health, and in January oh-nine, I recommended to the Board of Health that the clinic be shut down, no later than June thirtieth, two oh nine. Four key reasons include, one, local competition, two, very poor financials, three, setting a policy that says if a program can be done in large part by the private sector, it does not need to be done by the Board of Health. And four, the financial situation in which the county finds itself does not lend itself to continuing to offer bailout money to this particular program after June thirtieth. When I discussed this with the Board of Health in January, I told them there were going to be some key things that I needed to have commissioner approval from so that we can proceed in this process. So on your agenda, I have listed ten particular items. Now, obviously, it's the choice of this board as to approve or not approve any or all, but if you allowed this, then I could start this afternoon beginning to eliminate this particular program. And we also are going to be very sensitive to the needs of the employees and be very sensitive to the needs of the clients, and you will hear that during my presentation. The first item that I need your approval on is to riff the dental, the dentist position effective May twenty-ninth, two oh nine. We will need to pay out his vacation time at that time. The second item, and again, I'm going to go quickly because in deference to your time, but if you have questions, please stop me. Second item is riff the remaining positions effective June thirtieth. We've actually lost two positions, we have two folks that have landed, which is excellent. We have not filled their positions, so we just have one more person that we need to land that, other than the dentist. So we're down from a staff of four to two, but we're going to hang in there. We need to mail about forty-six hundred letters, regular mail, to patients of record advising them of the closing. This would take place on or about April fifteenth. Here's what record, patients of record mean. This does not mean we're currently serving forty-six hundred patients. It simply means that since the beginning of the clinic, we have about forty-six hundred patients on record. They will each get a letter. Many of them have landed with other dentists. We also find out that we're not getting a lot of new patients because as people read about the clinic, they're just going to other providers, and that's probably smart for them and their families. But again, state law requires that we send out forty-six hundred letters, and in the course of doing that, we have met with the local dentists through help from Dr. Fisher, with the local dental society. We do have some local dentists who are willing to take patients, and we, as patients, call us and say, you know, we know you're ending the clinic, can you refer me to a dentist? We are putting together a list, and that list does have some names on it now. And we won't go into who is on there, but we have made the local dentist aware and we can say that, at this point, I'm pleased with the response. Total response, no, but it's not over yet. Some of them are still calling me and talking to me about it.
How about giving me a breakdown of the forty-six hundred? How many counties are involved in that?
Primarily Lee County. I think two years ago, Mr. Reeves, they allowed to take Chatham and Harnett, but I'm told very little are in that, from that county. To be honest, I don't have in front of me a county breakdown, could try to get it. And we have looked at other information, but we've got a computer system that, for whatever reason, doesn't allow it to, allow us to generate. My guess is probably ninety percent Lee County.
It would, the second question is, did the, and this is Dr. Fisher, did the Health Board ever hold a public hearing on this, this matter? To discuss the fact that you're going to dispense with providing the service or the closure of the program?
Yes, we did. We had an open comment night, I think we only had one person to make a comment.
That was in January?
Yes, sir.
In January?
Yes, sir.
That was a public hearing for that particular purpose or just a? What I'm asking is, did you advertise and hold a public hearing and say we're closing?
No, we didn't know. We didn't know we were required to. The way the Board of Health operates.
It wasn't a requirement, it's just a question right now.
No, the way, the way the Board of Health does business is, we send information to the media, and then we have a public comment section, and we basically say, here's the agenda. The agenda item that evening stated closing of the Lee County Health Department Dental Clinic, and we did have some comments, in fact, we had a written statement that we do have in the minutes from a, a local citizen, so.
What was it about?
That particular person had a concern about what would happen if we closed and where would these persons go. And when the Board of Health approved that recommendation, my recommendation, and it was unanimous, what we've done, Mr. Reeves, through Dr. Fisher's leadership, and, and I am working with him, but under his direction, we've met with several organizations, and there's several situations out there where we're trying to make sure people land the way they should. We've met with a dental provider out of Harnett County, they're talking about bringing in a dental van to the Helping Hands place. No, no finalization on that, but we feel like that's a, an opportunity there. I'm planning to meet with the dental clinic folks in Moncur to let them know. I've let the regional health directors know what's happening. And every dentist in the county got a letter signed by me, and that's thirty of them, the members of the dental society, saying, here's what we're doing, here's why, here's the percentage we have Medicaid, Health Choice, and no pay. Can you help? And at this point, I believe, four have stepped up and said, yes, we will. But we also think that because we're not getting new patients and because our low, our current number is really diminishing, for instance, in the month of March, we only have forty-five patient visits to a day. Not a lot, that we feel like that people are landing with a dental provider. But I can tell you this, there's also another situation that has come up, and Dr. Fisher and I have talked to some folks, and we're basically just holding that one confidential, but at the same time, Dr. Fisher is working pretty closely, and I'm, I'm with him, and we're going to keep the lines open through the summer into the fall, and if somebody needs a dentist, you do with public health, people always do. I've done it, nurses do it, staff does it. You get on the phone and you say, Mrs. Smith needs a dentist and she's got three kids, can you help? We will make that pledge to you, that is part of what we do, but I don't know, sir, that we'll need it that much, you know? So, I, I hope that helps.
It does help. Did you notify any of the other county health departments of what you've done?
Yes, sir, through their health directors. Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir. We need to establish a process to transfer records to the dentist, the dentist's choice, and with the way we're going to do that is, we will send a paper copy of their record out. There's a question about whether or not to send x-rays, x-rays are only good through a year. And if we made a copy of the x-rays and had to keep the original here, Mr. Crumpton's bailout money would have to increase by five thousand dollars for a machine that we don't wouldn't need but for one time, so we're going to make a decision to transfer x-rays at the request of that receiving dentist. Otherwise, we will keep them here. You just can't make a good copy of an x-ray, but you certainly can of a paper record. We need to establish a records retention process for a period of ten years at state law. What we're doing is, and I've worked on this with Mr. Kyle Edwards, the IT director, we visited a firm in McLever County, Advanced Imaging Systems, that do business with Lee County schools. They have given us a proposal to scan what we think is approximately sixty-nine thousand pages of records that we have, making up those forty-six hundred. We're going to put them on a disk, and it'll actually be a case of about eight discs. That's going to cost us about eighty-one hundred dollars. We think that's a good way to save time and paper and storage space over the next ten years. And with Kyle's help, we'll be able to take those discs, run them into the computer on the front desk, so if anyone comes in and says, I, I was here three years ago, my name is Mary Smith, I need my records, we'll be able to go to Data Merge and get it. This will cost us eighty-one hundred dollars. For the record, I have budgeted eight thousand in next year's budget. If you approve this today, I'm basically asking you to also remember that that's been approved as part of next year's budget, so please don't cut me then, you know? But, in other words, this allows me to sign an agreement to copy records with these folks in June, but I pay a bill in July. That's, that's the way I want to do it. We're maneuvering some things here, as you can see. We need to give notice to the rental company that we're vacating the space. I believe that's been handled, and the Board of Health got a copy of that lease exit letter that I believe someone from the board signed, or perhaps the president.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We are giving notice to general services to help us move any items that are kept, need to be kept by Lee County, make sure the space is cleaned and fixed. We leave there, if you approve it by June thirtieth, we want it to be as perfect as it can be the day we moved in. It's a beautiful building, and I, I hope someone gains from using it. We've loved having the space over there. We will be in the position of selling equipment. We have four dentists locally that are interested perhaps in purchasing. Now, we know we have to go through general services and, and that process, but we think we could make some money that would, of course, be returned to the dollars, to the commissioners. But again, we will store equipment and supplies if that doesn't happen. We've talked about number eight, forwarding records per patient request. Number nine, this is an extra. We have a regional dentist, dental hygienist who is housed at the dental clinic, and when these folks are housed in local health departments, you really do get a lot of extra help from them, and you don't have to pay for it. And we would like to allow her to stay with us. We may put her in the Health Ed building on Steel Street, or we may put her upstairs on the second floor, but Wendy Saymore has done an awfully good piece of work for the school system here, as well as for the health department. And if we could keep her, we feel like we'll get a little bit more of her time than she might normally give us. It's basically a rent-free offer that we would be giving her if approved, but we would want you to know that she's housed here, and we want the manager to know, and that we're going to have to plug in a computer, not, I don't think it'll be ours, but we're going to have to probably give her a badge to let her indoors, and, and the county does need to know about that. And if you could approve that, that would be appreciated. And I do want to make one more comment, and it's in the summary part. The dental program has reached the point in its life, we're declining revenues, and we think that the figure of a hundred thousand dollars may probably reduce to closer to ninety. Tell you, this afternoon, as late as one-thirty, I was running numbers again, so we're, we're watching this every day. We received notice of a Medicaid cost settlement, which will bring in some dollars to the health department, and when all things come together, we think it'll decrease it by about eight or nine thousand. Now, good news is, Mr. Crumpton will get some money in the budget. The other news is, it's last year's Medicaid dollars, so it has to go back accounting-wise to oh-seven, oh-eight. Then the question may come up, well, gosh, you're showing losses for last year, won't that help them? Actually not, because they took in Medicaid money which went back to the previous year, so it's all in accounting procedure. We are losing, we will lose this year approximately, best case, ninety thousand. And we feel like we have reached the point in, in the life of this program where it no longer fits a need locally. When this was set up, we needed it. It was an important program, we thought there would be a lot of good from it, and there is, a lot of good happened. We think we took care of a lot of patients' needs in terms of their decay, missing or, or ill teeth. But at this point, we don't see it any longer as a program that we need. Now, again, nothing's a hundred percent. Would we still have twenty percent need out there? Probably, you know, but it's not like it used to be. And frankly, if I had my druthers, I would take the money and say that there's some other things that I think we could use for public health, and those would include programs with asthma, programs with diabetes, child health programs, because the state has cut our money this year, and we may lose some services in that area. And we'd also like to work in a program that we call health disparities between and among the races, where people in one race may have higher blood pressure than another. We need to address those things. And we think that if this money were to ever become available, we could move in other directions. But we're not asking for it, and we didn't ask for it in next year's budget. So, be glad to answer any questions that you may have or not for this issue.
Any other questions, because this is an action item, and we're, we're going to need a motion, and then, of course, we can continue to discuss or debate, but if there are any other burning questions right at the moment, because I'm going to make the motion to, to move along with this.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other comments? Mr. Kellam?
Do we have any grant considerations that, that on the onset of this dental clinic that we, you know, would have to pay back any? Has anybody checked that out? Do we get grant money that we would? You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did get grant money.
Yes, sir.
But I'm, I'm not aware that there's a payback provision.
You're correct, sir. There is a, we have a four-chair unit in the dental clinic. We think, and we're investigating it now, that one of those chairs may belong to the community college. If that's the case, come June thirtieth, they might take that chair. If that's the case, come June thirtieth, they're going to have to take that chair, move it somewhere, not quite sure what it's their call. But we're, we're actually looking at each piece of, of equipment because some were bought with one grant, some apparently were with another, and there was this legal linkage, but we're not, we weren't ready to do the full work on it until you all moved on this so that then we can make sure that Mr. Crumpton and Mr. Hoyle chime in in terms of taking a look at whatever agreements. But I'm with Mr. Crumpton, I think so far, so good. The only question may be that one chair.
Any other, any other questions?
I just don't want anything to come back and bite us.
Yes, sir.
Just as a point reference, the, the contract, I would have to sign the contract, not, not Mr. Surphus. And then, any of the money that is spent in this year's budget would actually have to come out of this year's budget. Can't transfer the expenditures in the next year's budget, so whatever's incurred would have to be paid out of this year's budget, so. But there's, there is savings currently in the, in the health department with the things that they've done to cover this expense if, if some of that money had to come out this year, so. Howard's done a, a great job of reducing the budget for the health department. His plan is a, a big part of our cost reduction for next year and getting our budget in balance for next year, so. We appreciate everything he's done and, and everything Dr. Fisher and the board have done.
I'd like to echo that and I know this is a hard time for all of us and these are not easy decisions to make and there are pros and cons about this, but there's a reality factor here that I think you faced and the, your board has faced very squarely and your, your summary and your recommendations here are straightforward. And having said that, I'd like to put in motion or make the motion that the, for the closing of the clinic as stated above in your action plan which we have before us. So, that's the motion that we move forward as you have outlined it, to close the dental clinic. And I would ask, is there any discussion before we vote?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crumpton, the eight thousand, could we, I want to make sure that, that would we need to pay that bill this year or that?
Whatever is incurred.
Okay.
We would have to pay this.
As long as we could find it and then we'll just, we may reduce next year by eight and try to find this year, do something.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure that you knew that there was an eight thousand dollar figure involved.
All in favor of the motion? Please indicate so by saying aye. Aye, opposed? There is no opposition, the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good one.
The next item is the consideration of changes in the Lee County Health Insurance Plan by Joyce McGeehee, Mrs. McGeehee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, we're in support. I'd like to propose that we make changes to the health insurance plan by changing the co-pays in the plan from twenty, forty to twenty-five and fifty and change the deductible from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars. And the pharmacy benefit will change from ten, twenty-five, forty to ten, thirty-five and fifty. And I'd like to propose that the employees and retirees that are under age sixty-five would pay partial premium of thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents per month if they participate in the PPO plan. Our proposal is to offer two plans, one plan called an HSA and one is the PPO. The HSA plan will require a contribution from the county of seven hundred and fifty dollars and this plan would have a higher deductible of fifteen hundred dollars. And the employees and retirees that are under the age of sixty-five would not pay any premium for the HSA because it is a cheaper plan than the PPO plan. I would like to propose that we provide a medical supplemental plan at no cost for retirees that are post-sixty-five. This plan would, if you look at your information, is a very good plan, it's called Blue Medicare. It's really, really good, it has low co-pays, it pays at ninety percent, prescription plan is very good. It's a very, very good plan for those post-sixty-five at no cost. We have approximately twenty-eight post-sixty-five employees in our plan now. The budget impact to the plan, if we do this, our health insurance cost will be reduced by six and a half percent. Should we stay with the current plan that we have where everyone is on the PPO plan, our rates would increase this year by thirteen and a half percent. And I would like to recommend that the board approve changes to the health plan. I'm open for questions if you have questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same plan we went over at the retreat. We didn't vote at that time, kind of wanted to give everybody the chance to digest that information and went back and talked to the employees again about, about these changes, so. We feel good about that and once again, the savings is a critical part to next year's budget plan.
Another reality check here about things that we're going to have to do to economize and I think you would say that the feedback from employees through their management has been generally favorable.
Yes, we've held information meetings with all departments, we actually went into the departments and had a lot of meetings with employees to explain what HSA is and how it works so they could understand it upfront before we have the cross, we shall come in and do enrollment meetings and talk to the employees and explain it further to them. We'll also have separate meetings with the retirees so they can get an understanding of what we're offering for the retirees too.
So, what you're proposing here is the approval of the option two?
Yes, the change in the plan.
Yeah, right, which leads to that.
Yes, sir.
Option two.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this plan as submitted? It's been moved and that this, the motion made that this be approved, is there any discussion?
When you came back and talked with employees, did you have any concerns or any of them voiced serious concerns about the change?
No, sir. Most people understood and a lot of people are weighing what they need and we did offer assistance to them, trying to help them figure out what's the best plan for them because it's on an individual basis what you need and what, what you have.
And have you contacted the, the twenty-eight, the post-sixty-five?
No, sir, we have not, we were waiting on the board to make a decision before we contact you.
Any other comments, questions? Now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the resolution as, as presented, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye, opposed? It is approved unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we're in support.
Okay, next item, Medicaid Hold Harmless Refund by Finance Director Lisa.
Good afternoon. As you all know, last year was the first partial year of the Medicaid relief that the state implemented and part of it was based on our ADM allocation last year. The state's intentions in figuring Medicaid relief was based on withholding sixty percent of our ADM allocation. The Medicaid relief package was not passed before the first distribution was made into the ADM accounts. The first distribution of the year is the largest distribution of the year, which caused us to all realize that they weren't probably, for most of us, going to be able to withhold sixty percent. So, when they reconciled everything in August of two thousand and eight, we were notified that we had received an overpayment. We were instructed at that time to sit tight that they would take it out of the next year's whole harmless money. We are not due to receiving hold harmless money this year. The state has now figured out that they have money sitting around in sixty-some counties that is theirs and so they have asked for a refund of that money. For Lee County, it amounts to forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents and we are asking for your approval for us to submit that payment back to the state.
Okay.
I'm a little bit figuring out stimulus money.
Is there a sign?
Actually, that's where it might come from. It might come from the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars they sent us as part of the Medicaid.
Our intention is to charge this payment back to the Medicaid line item in social services at this point, so it may, Mr. Crumpton pointed out.
Before it goes up. Move to approve.
A motion's been made to approve, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye, opposed? There is no opposition, the motion is approved unanimously, thank you very much.
I want to say before you take a seat, this should teach us a lesson, unlike the gift boys in the mouth who put money on the side, when you offer to pay them, they say, no, get with it later. Later can sometimes get us in trouble.
Thank you very much.
My easiest name. We can't hold him harmless.
The next item is, the next item has to do with the cemetery. That is to say, the cemetery Board of Trustees, there is a vacancy on that board and we have an applicant in the name of Mr. George Wilburg who has expressed an interest in-